You there?
Yeah. This is a long interview.
That's what I thought. We'll start the work session for City Hall, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Got a relatively large package of stuff. There's copies in that. Yeah, you're welcome to your log say there's. So we have the minutes for May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. The regular minutes as well as the work sessions. Comments or concerns on that?
Uh, Claire?
Yes ma'am.
I noticed we have a second camera. May I ask what that is and why?
Oh, you know, my happiness that I would start a wide stream of this meeting last year.
So the audience will know that?
Do you know?
One.
It's no different with us with recording and then posting on YouTube or the public annual one now either.
Back to the original question, uh, minutes for May twenty-third, regular session and work session. Any questions or comments? Here it is.
The meeting minutes. My concern has been for years now about the recording of the motion. Because it's not reflect what and how the motion will be called. So the motion was called. In a second, I depend. Is it? The main motion is to to have the recording of the first main motion in the meeting minutes for the meeting on May nine. To reflect how motion will verbally call. The motion was to have the meeting minutes for the meeting on, uh, the one second meeting minutes on April twenty-fifth. There is a number four. Council Trent suggests an article ballot for the city election due to high, uh, for standards back in the eighth in the city. The mayor's, yeah, the lawyers in around that, the board can bring up with them. Council Trent shares Sweden would happen over. The voter are more comfortable when they can read the ballot themselves. Exactly, that had five little language ballot. That will house will hold report. And the draft of the meeting minutes currently say council train make under main motion to add the first recording of the first motion made on May nine, regular meeting minute. So it doesn't really reflect the substance of the language that the motion intend to ask for adding at detail to the meeting minute. And I have sent, uh, city board to manager on, uh, mayor and all the council members an email on the today regarding this and also reference to the video recorded at one minute when the motion happened for your reference. And I'm asking. And I'm asking to have the meeting, uh, the record of the motion have is reflect the way it will verbally called. And I also asked to have the city attorney to reveal, uh, the motion and the record of theme of the motion to give us a formal legal advice.
Any other comments related to the events? Here. We got presentations now. So we'll do law, police department promotional ceremony of Officer Block to the rank of sergeant. Law, police department promotional ceremony of Officer Fortune to the rank of sergeant. Law, police department promotional ceremony of Sergeant Smith to the rank of lieutenant. And law, police department territorial services representative in the construction of and that she's done, right?
Yes, sir.
New business, uh, approval of law, police department recommendation for the surplus of four vehicles. Mr. City Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Ray, I'd like, I think, uh, Castle Tran was requesting a, uh, the city attorney and I think that requires a motion from our city attorney.
Proven letters, do that in the form of work, form of session, form of session.
Okay. Uh, but this time we do have some new business. I would ask that we could move up, uh, the broadband Keith Quarles presentation on top of those, uh, perceived elements. We have a score here in the.
Uh, Keith, that's good.
I appreciate it. Thanks, sir. I'll go ahead and hand these out.
So good evening. Uh, my name is Keith Quarles. Um, I represent a company called A two B Incorporated, based out of Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, we are a fiber broadband company. Uh, our business is, um, similar to, you have a little bit different model than your typical service provider. It's closer to like Atlantic Gaslight, where it's a wholesale. We focus on building, uh, future fiber infrastructure and allowing various carriers to use that to ultimately deliver their services. So very much like, uh, Atlantic Gaslight. So. Recently, last year, uh, we purchased a hundred mile network, uh, throughout the county uh, that has been servicing the, um, uh, the school, the county school districts, about seventy-three locations. Uh, do you look on the, uh, the last page of the document there? Uh, kind of give you a little bit of a version of that. The dark blue lines represent all those, uh, all those miles of fiber. And basically for the last ten years or so, um, it's been a network that has solely serviced those schools. So there's a lot more capacity, uh, that it can service. So we purchased it, uh, August of last year. And, um, we are now extending those services to the community as a whole. So, um, a lot of that right now is going on. Probably more, you've probably seen that more in Riddledale and, um, Jonesboro, a little more activity. But across the entire network, uh, we're extending broadband services to the home, to the business, to whatever. So, um, as we did our reach out, uh, we reached out to the city moral, um, or city manager, IT and so forth, and had some discussion around, um, your new district development. And basically what we put on the table and proposed was to, um, in simple terms, future proof that development. Um, instead of allowing, you know, different various cable, whatever, basically coming in with a unified, uh, fiber system throughout the entire district, um, coupled with a wireless, um, and five G system on top of that. So in essence, it's a, um, it's an infrastructure proposal to essentially future proof that, that development. And we, we were doing this in Atlanta and all around where, um, having a little infrastructure doesn't really make sense, especially in your development. When that, when that type of infrastructure is aging out in the world we live in, technology box. So that's what we proposed. We had some discussion with the city manager. Um, I can kind of dive into the details of what that looks like. Uh, that's the, that's the high level of what we're, what we're talking about. And I just for note, the, um, ironically, probably a great situation, just adjacent to the district, uh, to the west is already one of our active expansion areas. I believe that's in technically Forest Park, but it's a, it's a perfect synergy to where we're already expanding and building out new fiber just adjacent, so we can literally come right across and dive right into the district and, uh, prepare that entire development. So it's all fiber. Uh, I didn't say future group, but fiber technology is, is at this point, uh, for the foreseeable future. What do you want to have?
Questions, please, ma'am.
So you're saying you're, you purchased existing fiber networks and you're adding additional.
That's correct, yes. Exactly. And my discussions with the city is to expand our reach into the district. And the mechanism, how this essentially needsment, but basically to extend that fiber network to cover the entire district. So no, not, no one or nothing in that, uh, district will not have fiber access to fiber. And also, uh, the kind of value add that we're creating is also providing a, um, a wireless and five G system that can be used for the, by the city to, you know, do free Wi-Fi to, to that little area. I can do some, um, broadcast things that they may want to do, just ad hoc. You have some, I believe the ant theater is going to be there and just other various things. You'll be able to do that seamlessly on your own versus having to call AT&T or call Comcast. Not, not saying it's a bad, not putting out bad names, but other providers. You, it, it empowers you as the, the owner of that facility to be able to do a lot more things on your own versus having to be relying on a particular carrier. That's the other value add.
You have, um, agreements with other city, city specifically? Or you're just expanding into the area of Forest Park? You have a relationship agreement to do something similar in any other city in Cleveland?
Um, no, not, there are some discussions with the county to be, to be fair, um, at, at large. Um, but no, we're, we're, right now, we're just operating specifically private industry, delivering to the home, delivering to the, to the general public. This and, uh, this, this city and the county, um, are, are current discussions with a direct occasion with the county municipality.
So you're expanding the, the network and you will be the provider of this, the Wi-Fi service?
Correct.
How many customers do you currently have?
Um, so we have, so our customer is a relative is, again, we're wholesale, so it's, we're connected to, um, probably over a couple thousand, um, premises, not in this county, but in, in other, other areas between Atlanta, um, uh, Warner Robins and Fulton.
Do there are other questions about that right now?
Mr. Quarles.
Yes, sir. Oh, he said Quarles.
Good evening. Hello. Um, so I, I, I thought you, what you said, um, actually the, uh, what is the comparison between your, uh, kind of, uh, that you have, um, compared to the conventional, you know, uh, Comcast, uh, mid country, uh, climate, speed, and you can, I think. One year, thank you.
So because we're all one hundred percent fiber optics, um, the service is going to be more equivalent to like an AT&T fiber, um, Verizon, BIOS. Um, and again, we're wholesale, so in essence, we enable those providers to use our network to deliver that ultimate service. Just like Atlantic Gaslight will use, uh, would allow SCANA or Georgia Natural Gas to deliver service. Um, so it's a, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a space that's not very well known, obviously, in industry, but it does exist. Um, in other, I can point you to other cities, counties, states that have a similar type. It's called open access, what it's called in the industry. Um, but yes, directly answer your question, it would be, um, equal to a, uh, AT&T, if, if you're familiar with AT&T Fiber, Horizon BIOS, any fiber optic service that is one hundred percent fiber, um, that's what you're going to get. There's no hybrid mixing with ESL or any copper involved, so it's the, it's the top of the shelf, if you will.
Thank you. And, uh, educated, uh, if you do, um, what is the comparison between fiber and the regular, so that you can have right now? The Thomas Peter, uh, kind of thing with it. Thank you.
I get that question a lot. Um, think of it this way, um, fiber is speed of light and anything else is speed of sound. Star Trek versus Top Gun. You know, it, it, it literally is that. It's, it's flying at the speed of light versus flying at the speed of sound. Um, what, the kind of the time that we're living in, um, is, is a transitional time, right? So just fundamentally, the, the cable providers are still sticking to their copper plan if that's what they can. Um, folks like AT&T, Verizon, the historic telephone providers are slowly and sequentially upgrading the networks. Our, our place to jump past both of those and say, just start with a hundred percent fiber. We don't have any legacy. So to maybe further answer your question, I, I mean, speeds, you're talking, speed is not even an issue. It's one, ten, a hundred gig, uh, it's just a matter of, in essence, a flip of a switch, right? We don't have the issues of having to deal with slowdown. Oh, when it gets to this part of the network, it starts to slow down because it's on the old coax or it's on the old copper. We don't have that problem. Um, what, what becomes more important, uh, Mr. Councilman, is things that we now are starting to realize we haven't had no, no consciousness of is think words like latency, uh, things like security. Those become, um, a lot more important as we talk about municipal traffic, um, networks getting overcrowded. Why did, why does all of our phones start slowing down and you get plenty messages all of a sudden? Uh, why does our, our, our videos start buffering and things of that nature? That's what's considered latency, right? And so on an all fiber network, those, those things just don't happen because you're talking about speed of light now versus the speed of sound.
Thank you.
Uh, feel free to expand.
The school, well, of course, he's not a really scrunch with me, so. But did I hear you say residential, your provider?
Yes, ma'am.
So what, what is that service on?
So, um, so currently we have, um, about three different residential carriers that are onboard with us. Um, of course, we own an AT&T. Um, uh, there are some of the names Connect Fast and, um, Culture Wireless, um, although they're not really wireless, so it's not. But basically what they do is they interconnect, they connect to us up in Atlanta. And we basically bring their service all the way from there down into the footprint. So, uh, which you can see if you go to, uh, ecommunityfiber.com, uh, you'll see your normal portal, we put in your address and it'll tell you, um, uh, what provider would be acceptable. So what you'll see there is, you know, one gig service for, I think, uh, the lowest guy is like sixty, sixty-nine dollars right now. And it'd be really kind of a tier, like fifty, a hundred and one gig service. So it's all fiber service. Uh, right now, um, this area adjacent to you in Forest Park has, has, um, uh, put enough service orders which warrants us to expand in that area. And then also down by Taylor Road, uh, outside of city, kind of like Jonesboro, uh, some pretty well. Um, it's a pretty large, um, area where we're going to be expanding into about six different subdivisions, which totals about, uh, fifteen hundred premises. So that area there went online, ordered service and things of that nature. And so now we're extending into that area.
Okay, um, so tell me how these cell towers and all that kind of thing, what's the?
What's the play there? I understand quar.
What's the deal with that?
Sure, sure. Um, uh, I don't, I get his education on that. So, um, uh, wireless is fine. It is, um, we, we kind of consider wireless recreational, right? It's not, it is, uh, at the end of the day, all the traffic that flows around the air has to come down somewhere. So you come down to the cell towers. A, that radio signal that's up in the air is only as good as what's at the bottom of that tower. So in neighborhoods and areas that have fiber to the tower, you're going to get a little bit better service. In cities and counties that have all fiber to the tower, you're, you're going to get better service. But fundamentally, um, you're still dealing with, um, senior style technology. And so if you're using that to rely as your primary, it's, it's, you know, they can market it once they want. It's, it's as good as your phone. You're not, like, to, to run your home service over that is just not, uh, very sustainable. And again, that's, that's conditional, there, there are certain environments, you know, like apartment complexes sometimes can, can do okay there. MDUs, hotels, things of that nature. But if it's a, you know, if you're in a single home environment and you have anybody more than yourself and, you know, one or two people, it's, it's going to catch up. And, and actually, that's what you said, so you see a lot of, I see a lot of success on wireless to the, wireless to the home when you have that single, a single user. You can, you can get away with that, it's just not going to, you know, not going to be bad. But once, once you go out to family for, and my son is a gamer and my daughter's has five different devices, it, there, there, there's, there's no way. So you kind of have to move up.
Ms. Tran.
So how much would be the monthly cost per unit? Have you already, uh, looked, have a look at, uh, the district area you propose for this project?
So what we're proposing is, uh, we're going to foot the bill, right? So, um, and that just roughly, I think that's around two hundred fifty thousand or so roughly to expand into this particular area. Um, and then we're proposing actually a, um, a structured revenue share for that easement access, uh, under that easement access area.
So you were saying the implementation is going to be over two hundred thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that would be the cost at the end or the cost that you would impose to the city?
No, no, that's what, we, we would incur that cost.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Renan.
So you, you answered my question because my, my question was, well then, what is the ask? What are you asking for?
Sure.
Um, so you, you've answered that. Um, and then the opportunity for expansion revenue sharing, you know, a little bit more conversation, you know, in City Hall, understood. Uh, but initially I was like, no latency issues, like seriously?
It, 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 it sounds very right because again, historically, the incumbents, I'll say broadly, are, 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 are working against themselves, right? They're working with old legacy stuff. When you don't have that and you just look at it from fresh eyes, it's, it's, it becomes very simple. I'm deploying something new, um, not renov, you know, the renovation versus new build. It's, it's, it's nice and clean. It's, um, it's, it's a hundred percent design for, for the, for the future, so. You, I can't make it more simple than that. It sounds, it sounds on break, but that, that's just the reality. And, and again, we're not, we're not unique. I mean, there, there's plenty of other cities and, um, uh, counties and so forth that are very much, um, understanding the dynamic, the new dynamic, right? That, that the way it's been done is, has caught up with the needs of the people, the needs of the community, the needs of, just even your own direct needs. I mean, I, I want to make this guy's job a heck of a lot easier. And it can extend to public safety can, uh, I mean, again, kind of my last point is, the, the, the bigger picture is once you have a kind of unified system and network across that, that, that you all can semi-control, you can do all the things that you see in the newspaper, smart city, internet of things, all that kind of stuff. I mean, I'm in Atlanta, I've, I've been part of plenty smart city attempts. And the reason they fail is because you've got this disparaged infrastructure. ETT has some part, Comcast has another, the city has another part, there's another vendor that has, each, nothing is going to ever, ever.
So that's a good segue into understanding all of the campus sites that we have in the city. That would probably be our issue. Have you looked at, we have, um, what we hope to be our recreational area off of Reynolds Road? Some, some other sites that we own in the city, we've got a lot of public parks and different things. I don't know how far out we would, we would roll in terms of wanting to be a smart city. But have you looked at any of the other sites and is there a conflict with the infrastructure that are there?
Um, we have started to look at, um, some of the other sites, um, we have that list of sites. We've had some initial discussions in concept, um, conflict with other infrastructure. We haven't gotten far, uh, just because we're, we're still gathering information. Um, but, but I can say from the initial past that, um, your city is, is in a profile of, of, of success, of, of something that they, they could really be violating. Again, that's public safety, that's, um, monitoring, that's notifications, things, all, all the stuff that you kind of wanted to, um, I think you guys are proud. So we wanted to start with something, um, something simple, is, you know, is going and, and, and we just want to review this for you guys. And then next step, we'd love to look at a more expanded, uh.
So basically, you, you pick up from, say, a hub somewhere. Maybe you're running true fiber underground or in some type of little cage, right? And I'm assuming that you're not.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And when it comes out of the ground, what does that do?
Okay, so, um, you've got a couple of areas when it comes out, right? So we're going, if it's going into a building, so you have the retail building, right? So we're coming up directly into, um, what's called the India from, uh, Telkomsel, if you will. But, um, in every new development, you've got an access point, so we're not, we're not going through a wall per se. This is our, it should be our existing pathway that gets us into the building and out. So, um, to kind of take you from, um, you made a good point, so kind of take from the outside in, we're literally going to set up a, um, a new cabinet specific for this development. So that cabinet will, uh, feed in about a hundred forty, I think we're going to bring a hundred forty-four pound fiber, so, you know, more than enough. And then that immediately goes underground and it goes along those routes, right, to the various points. So where it goes to a wireless node, and again, this is still concept, we don't, there's still more work to go. But we basically will run a line up to some little wireless node for the Wi-Fi. Uh, when it goes into a building, uh, we're going in no different than, um, some of the attachments you see on some of the buildings here. If, if there's a room to get into, we can come all the way underground up. If not, then we're attaching to the side of the building, uh, with the, we call it optical terminal, uh, uh, an external terminal box. And it's going through again.
And then from there, you, you run a true fiber run to each?
Absolutely, yes.
How does that, does that multiplex down to like a, a network box?
O N T. Sounds like you knew a little, optical network terminal. So yeah, it's, it's, um, now, if, 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 in some cases, um, uh, so no matter where it goes into O N T, you can optical network terminal. Um, in the case of retail, sometimes, and again, you have to get some more, more, more knowledge of the, of the specs of the building, it may be a CAT six run from, from that O N T to the particular suite. Um, but, but preferably for any new development, we want to run, we want to run a fiber drop all the way.
And pretty much what we have in this building is CAT eight, CAT five.
Well, actually, right now, we, we have AT&T right there. It's been there for about, since we started developing the, uh, the district. The, the, the copper in there, it kind of antiquated because there's no way they, they can supply it to a higher bandwidth than, uh, one twenty, make it a bit, uh, a second.
Mm-hmm.
Um, good, AT&T five, I mean, AT&T copper is, uh, without technology, it's kind of limited. But in order, in order to bring in the speed that we're talking about one gig or two gig, we, we need to have, um, um, a thicker copper or we go with, uh, fiber like immense.
But, but like in the shops, do we have CAT five in, in the shops now?
Uh, the, the, no, the, um, the CAT five is not ready in there yet. It, it, it's just an AT&T copper.
It's not there, we got to put it in and do.
Yeah.
It's, it's not there. You, you use it as part of the buildings, you know, building spec things that happen at today, right?
But, but when he dropped the, uh, O N T in at, at one location, um, he can drop the, uh, the cable, the line into the drop and it convert over to the, uh, CAT five.
Yeah, and then you're not going to see, at, at that distance, you're not going to see, um, any, any designation.
I think I know the answer to this question.
Sure.
But, um, okay, each municipality that's out there has a franchise agreement with, you know, a number of players. This doesn't violate any of those agreements because we're basically giving them access to the right of way. You're, you're basically granted access to a right of way. And then each of you competes to see what they can sell, you know, based on some tiered structure. You, you charge that, somebody charged the fly, it's a horse.
Right, yeah.
But you could easily have somebody who just decides to have Comcast out there, even though it may not be where it serves.
Correct, yes. So, uh, and, and I think there is a question there is, um, uh, we don't, we, we don't put you in a position violating any, um, any telecommunications violation act. So the, 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 the main one that's out there is the franchise, the legacy franchise fee agreements with the cable wire. That's, that's what we run, run into all the time. Those, those agreements.
Do y'all play franchise agreements?
Say again?
Do y'all play franchises?
Um, we, we, we have, so we, we, we look at it as we converge to like an easement agreement versus a franchise fee. So, but it's, in, in concept, it's, it's similar. The only, the, the difference is, um, there's, there's new regulation against, um, pure franchise fees as it relates to. pure franchise fees as it relates to in, in-building type components. So, um, we're uniquely able to structure it as an open access provider, as an inter-service provider. We're, we're actually kind of uniquely able to, to do what we do because we're not the end service, the actual service provider. And franchise fee agreements are based on, um, actually, if you look at, if you look at the Ts and Cs of franchise agreements, uh, ninety-nine percent of them are based on the actual, um, infrastructure. It's not, it's not general across. So a cable provider can't come in to another cable providers. Uh, a cable, coax cable provider cannot come into another coax cable provider.
They don't like to provide each other competition.
They, 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 I could talk all day long.
Let's take like this building for example.
Sure.
We have very weak internet service here, which has been kind of legendaried for a while. Um, you know, it looks like you're not far from here if you're just looking at the map. Wha- what?
I don't, it's, I don't know. So, so, uh, so we, I'll say this, we're, we're, we're talking, we're, we're discussing that as well. Is, is whether that's redundancy.
He's smiling, sorry, you did it on that one.
Whether it's redundancy or replacement, or is it gonna be strategic? Ween off of, uh, we're willing, we're, we're willing to work with.
It's brutally slow and, and there are lots of problems from just a regular management perspective. If it takes forever to download something, upload something, just turn your computer on and basically do your job, then what we have doesn't work. Then we try to fix that at some astronomical number, which is, is still not good.
Yeah.
Unless you've got a solution, that's better than what we're doing.
And, and, and that's, that's, that's the essence of what we're talking about. It is, I'll give you a prime example. Um.
Well, I think we're talking T one?
Uh, no, no, T one, that's, uh, for auto technology. Now.
I'm old. So here, here's the.
Technically, for the update, uh, to correct this, we, we got a private line in, they terminate the connection, which is last week, and we speak, right? So now, the, the last, uh, the last phrase that we have to deal with, I bring everything, all these devices on our end, open port, go into the router, then we back online. The, the, our private line is, uh, we are at one symmetrical, one gig symmetrical. So that's gonna help out tremendously for the, um, upload five C point, uh, B S and A cloud services, uh, core services, P D as well, um, auto service overall.
I think the next, um.
It's fiber.
Fiber, but which, who's usually, which service is that? Is that his or is that?
Uh, that was ATN D. We gave a little.
All right, so they're basically using your line to provide a service.
Uh, not right, not, not in this particular case, no.
Okay.
But, but the, the, I think the, the, the bigger picture that we're looking at is, so that's just this one, right? So how about all of your facilities? And that's what we, that's what typically we run into is, when you, when you aggregate, take all the facilities, what they're, what you're paying versus what you're getting, you can, five, five times out of six, these are literal cases, we've found that municipalities are basically paying for a new network like every five to seven years, based on what they're paying. And God forbid, in three years, you wanna go to ten gig. You're, you're, you, you just, you know, you, you can also throw the whole budget.
It's really huge, so the police department, all the body cams and different things, all the dial.
Oh, yes, uh, that, not on the main network at all. We, we have, um, uh, one gig service for the Comcast, uh, copper for the, to, to accommodate all of the high-quality video to be uploaded to the cloud.
So we're happy with that, we're just not happy with both.
And all main connection here is, uh, we, we used to have OT, ATN D and now we, we're starting to migrate over to the new fiber.
We, we gotta start somewhere. So we're gonna start here. We're talking about the other things as well, but the initial, the initial concept is this one here.
But let, let's just say it's just little John and, you know, maybe he wants a little better speed or better price at his house. And I still have the coax cable that's just running across the line. Is there a router or something that, you know, you guys?
We bring, we bring your lines out.
So there's my fiber all the way to a router and then I want my fiber.
Send, send me the address, I'll see how far yours and the network.
I don't know that Dorothy did it first. Dorothy needs some speed. Other questions?
That's the problem. They call people fast.
Yeah, I call people that I don't even know calling them, so.
Other questions? Interesting proposal. Is there an aspect that comes with this?
Not yet, but it will be. Um, we wanna review this and, uh, just wanted to do the presentation to the council and remind the council and the citizens that we're in the midst of, uh, upgrading our comprehensive plan. There's that fifth column that nobody ever touches, which is wifi cities. I believe this helps us to reach and grow something we haven't done before in our comprehensive plan, which has been in place for ten years, so. It's just one of those things that nobody ever gets an opportunity to do and this looks like a great opportunity for us to do that off of wifi in our public areas, as long as our pass system, upgrade our security, the security systems out of the district and the Reynolds Road and everywhere else we have, including our, our facilities here and P D.
What about the county with the new facility that they're supposed to want to rebuild? All it does is put a large concept in there and everybody's on their phone, the land is real slow.
And again, with, with the red shade we're talking about, so all that traffic, at some point, that's gotta hit someone's network. And, uh, if, if you, we have those, those facilities, that's, that's red shade. That's the other part is, is, we're, we're, we're doing it on what other carriers don't. We open, we open, we're locating some revenue in this particular area, so.
He knows I like that, that's why he understands.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council, citizens and staff. I think we're right, the, uh, vehicles. Uh, there's four vehicles on here that the police department's asking to, uh, surplus. They're either high mileage or, uh, high maintenance costs on those. Uh, they're all listed on there. Any questions on those?
Questions, Ms. Renaud? Qua, anybody?
Yes, dude, so we do have, do we have, uh, plan to replace them by new vehicles that you got with them?
Yes, sir, we do. Uh, that's in the budget outline, the capital outline of the budget. Uh, there's a replacement of four vehicles, uh, with an additional, uh, three administrative vehicles. Where do we do two? I think we got it out of two. So there'll be six vehicles that will be replaced.
I get it.
Where, um, are we getting them from?
Uh, I believe, well, we don't, I mean, we've got some quotes from Wade Ford. Wade Ford is where we take the, anywhere some Chevy mountains they purchased for, they, they're certain vehicles. Much lesser cost, they're right at twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars for this. And that's from, um, help your guys. Hardy Ford. But who sells the Chevy?
Hardy Chevy.
Hardy Chevy. Audience participation.
State contract.
Yes, of course, through state contracts.
Other questions?
As far as, we have no problems getting deliveries, right? I mean, that, that era is done where.
Oh, no, not at all. Um, we have our contractors getting deliveries and lead times and everything, so. Uh, we try and do and vague bar still as best we can where we can. Um, and it's lots of times placing the orders and committing on the fact that we're gonna do this, you know, that the mayor council will approve the budget and related, we're able to do that, but um, there are still issues with the lead times on those with, with acquired vehicles. And particularly the police interceptors, that's where, any of the police vehicles and government vehicles, um, heavy equipment vehicles, fire services vehicles, we found that out when the chief was looking for the ambulance. We discussed last time that there's a lead time of.
Two years.
Two years. So we, we are still, so we have to plan ahead on that, I mean, we have very resourceful people that are able to find those things and various sundry places.
So we just lost the breathing, like, mental health, so.
True.
Other comments? Ms. Renaud? Ms. Trainor?
So, and the vehicle going to post, to be posted on a government deal to get bid now?
Yes, sir. They're not posted currently, but after it's approved, then yes, it will be posted.
We have stripped them of, uh, all, right, uh, you know, police stuff on there and then, uh, all the police packages before we put it off.
Any other questions, Ms. Qua?
No, no, thank you.
Excellent. Uh, approval of city manager recommendation to submit from RM Construction Development. Construction board concrete boardwalk.
Uh, this, I'm sorry. Uh, this is a proposal to put out on BidNet, um, sent out to roughly just shy of four hundred different contractors, conversations with different ones. The only one who actually submitted a contract bid was RM Construction. It came in at seven hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is a design by Jefferson Architecture. Uh, it will extend out twenty-four to twenty-six feet on the boardwalk. It solves two problems. It replaces the boardwalk, um, that was torn out and it also does a pen and epoxy approach to the existing foundation. So they will actually pen, um, pen and epoxy on the existing and pour the concrete to shore the foundation of all the shops out there. And if you've been out the shops, you've seen where there's some erosion issues. It also takes care of the, um, that embankment that comes down. So the grading will take place or we pour concrete walls and concrete and, and fencing and everything else should be included in that.
Questions? Ms. Renaud?
Uh, good question.
Ms. Trainor?
Um, I'm looking at the package, uh, my section of the information related to this project and look like, uh, it's included in the list of all the, um, the vendor, it's called the project supplying audit and it has the name. It's the R G number, I'm not sure what it is. Man contact is the opportunity matched, one to nothing.
The audit is a report that I print out every time we do one of these, just to show what this, the system automatically, when I put the parameters of the bid and this concrete work, it's fancying, it's, it involves pouring of, of concrete, degrading and everything else, it puts the parameters out there, who they're gonna send the bid out to automatically. So the bid is automatically sent out to another vendor. That just shows the vendors. Uh, also on there, if the, if the vendors have downloaded any information, which some of them have, um, if they submitted a bid, when they submitted it, when they looked at it. Uh, there were about five different vendors that I spoke to on the telephone, answered a number of questions, which are also included in the packet there. Um, as far as some particulars on the bid, there's also the, uh, heat equal drawings and the design plans and the engineering plans submitted by Jefferson, as well as the geotechnics are all included in that bid.
Okay, so the opportunity matched, which means that the system masked the quality case and, um, that vendor had registered when they set up a cow to match with our client.
Yes, sir.
It's also so the way the information is loading in itself.
Yes, sir. And if they downloaded it, they looked at it, if they, if they had any questions. And I, I put the, I put the geolens around the bid for those folks in the southeast area. So we're dealing with people in close proximity to those geographic.
Thank you. And have the city attorney review it here?
The bid, no ma'am.
Okay. And who is the, uh, uh, procurement officer of this project? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Renaud?
So I, I did have one question based off of the, the design for the boardwalk. It's gonna be poor concrete connecting to the existing sidewalk.
Yes, sir.
So has the existing sidewalk been kind of inspected and making sure that it's?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Part of that is, if you look at the design plans there, part of the Jefferson design plans were, they came in and they're, because of the, the lung features of the soil in that area, based on the Atlas's, uh, geotechnical survey, it's very loose soil. And so there has to be a number of helixes poured on that. And that's part of the expense of doing this particular one, is the helix have to come out at a certain degree to hit the stone and solid dirt. As well as there's gonna be an under, you're gonna have to underfill part of the foundation that's existing right now, as well as sidewalks, to bring them up. And the underfill is a number of, it's not just the concrete, it's also gonna be, um, some of the gravel, the pea gravel, whatever, dirt.
Yes, ma'am.
And then that will, it all has to be inspected as well as a special inspector, uh, just because of the nature of, of the design.
Ms. Qua?
No more questions, thank you.
Ms. Dean?
Uh, yes, do we have a, I'm looking through, a beginning and finish.
Um, the experts, uh, on this one are speaking to the, to the individual to find that out. Um, you said sixty to ninety days payment.
Okay. Um, so, price is good until six, seventeen, twenty-two?
Well, maybe we'll put in if we want to spend, to do for the prices, so. This is all the payment.
So, but that's.
Uh, I, I, I didn't see that, be quite honest. It, I'm sure it will hold out until we, that we. And that's part of the reason I do this is because, again, like with the supplies of the, uh, of concrete, just like the vehicles and everything else, it fluctuates so much, but, um, if we log into the bid, this is all the way to the bid.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um, from the, are we pulling aside the twenty twenty-one squad?
Yes, sir, that and, um, potentially some of the building grounds as well. Uh, with some residential stuff under and other works. Budget on that, so it can, so it's part of that, I have. And those exact numbers I don't have yet, but I will let you know as we, as we should discover for a shot.
So the squad is that under the budget and the building and ground still in, under the budget?
Yes.
For this year? And what is the legal status of the area where we don't do all the concrete?
The legal status of it?
Yeah. But that probably where the section we're going to do the job.
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking, I don't believe it says.
That area being owned by the city, where we put it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Excellent. Approval of city manager recommendations for paving, uh, pay attention, citizens, this is good, this is right in your front yard. Um, paving and resealing and striping, uh, city of Wall Street.
Uh, yes, and, uh, this is stuff that we discuss in the budget and I feel like we, we should, I'm asking if we're gonna move ahead with it now. We have the money to do so. Uh, this is going to be something that we haven't been able to do because of COVID. Keeps coming up in conversation, of course. Um, but for the past two and a half, three years, we haven't been able to do any of this because of the backlogs and, and the co, impact of COVID on staffing. Um, the county has typically done this for us in the past. Um, and speaking to them, they did give me a boost commitment to do some of this this year, maybe. Uh, but I got the same boost commitment last year and their backlog almost a year and a half off their pay. So they're gonna take priority before we do, so we're never gonna pay. Uh, so I suggest, I looked around, we found another company, uh, with the assistance of Brandon, we found Wildcat Striping, C N A, okay. County doesn't do ceiling anyway. Uh, these guys are a D P A and they're a company that is in the D O A S, so they're already under the state contract. The prices from them and the county are, maybe as far as differences on them. Uh, they can go ahead and start like almost immediately, once we get the green light on. And I feel like part of this is, uh, everybody's familiar with the, uh, the passing of the budget deal with, uh, on the national front. Uh, part of that was a, what was called a COVID clawback. We have amassed about two point two million dollars in COVID funding and we have judicially held onto that just in case, if something went awry or, um, we had some needs with that. And I feel like this is the time to turn it back before they claw back up to the federal government level, to the citizens. We're estimating that the, the sealing, strapping and paving will be somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. And that will do every neighborhood and every road in the city. Not paving, but sealing. The paving is a little bit more expensive. We're gonna focus on Huey and we're gonna focus on over X M R right now and over Reynolds Road, right at the bridge, where it's, the asphalt comes up to the cement box on the bridge. Um, but that alone, just to give you an idea how much the expense is for doing a paving, over X M R for that stretch from, uh, East Street all the way down to where the city limits are, is about two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. So it's expensive endeavor, but I think this is something, when we seal, it's not just to make things look better. It also adds life to twenty-seven to ten years on that sealed roadway. Because it rejuvenates it and it gives it some foil base and, and gives it more buoyancy to the actual asphalt itself. So then we begin our replacement process and our planning process like we've done in the past, where we can actually have those done on a timely basis and pick out two or three streets in the and eventually, we have to make that reconstruction. It's, it's not, our L I G grants are getting smaller and smaller and I see this as kind of a one-time opportunity for us to do something with that money we have and to get back to the citizens.
Questions? Ms. Renaud?
All right, so we will follow the priority schedule that we presented to the county as regards to the L I G.
For the most part, yes, ma'am. I think what we had a little bit of a change of priorities on this because of the milling and the, and resurfacing of some of those side streets. Um, everybody throughout Huey kind of knows that that's state competing here lately, not only from the Water Authority, but from numerous spot holes and other things. And there's a lot of traffic that goes down as well as over X M R. So the only reason we picked those is after driving the city, we see some areas of distinct need. We're gonna do some patch and seals on a lot of those places, like the entrance to the mall, um, which are city streets. Um, some of the other subdivision streets around the area, but. Uh, some of the other subdivision streets around the area, but those two have the most damage to them currently, and we felt like those took a little bit of top priority over some of the priorities we have with the L I G, which we are, we're able to do a shift in priority with the L I G grants.
And, and so, we're saying, strapping, sealing and paving, uh, during budget discussions, we've had conversations about some potholes. Are we narrowing our issues with potholes in this project?
Yes, sir. And the benefit of that is when they're out and they know that they're going to seal the other streets, uh, when they have the asphalt trucks out and they have the asphalt machines out, they can go ahead and do the patch and seals a lot easier. We've submitted a list to them, uh, they're project coordinator. So, if this goes, then they do, they'll do the paving first, um, and we'll notify all of the citizens up and down the streets where it's going to be affected. We have door hangers that we're ready to go in, um, but the, that would be the priority first, and then the ceiling will come second. There's two different divisions in that county that we have.
Long, we, we're still.
We're going to get some of those potholes. And then what we don't get, we could do a cold patch on as well, which isn't quite as good, but it has to be cost beneficial for them to come out. And we have some of those streets, um, for example, a lot of people don't know that the little side street behind Olive Garden, that's us, and that's, that's the Ratchet Street. So, we're going to try and do a little patch and seal on them. We may end up doing a little more, but.
Well, we, we've talked about the corner that's right up here at the intersection.
Yes, sir.
That seems to be growing out into the center line of the road, um, also further down East Street, you know, it's, it's a, I'm trying to be funny, but it's like a little cavern right there on the street.
We have a lot of needs, there's no doubt. And part of that, uh, I think part of the things we can look forward to, and I know that a lot of people say, why don't you fix this stuff on Highway fifty-four? Closest to not our street in the state, I don't even do that. The state's actually got.
The state will pay that for free. That's a good, well, not free, but they pay for it somewhere, but a lot of that's coming too.
Right, and they're coming, and I have, I have a plan for them. They're going to do about twelve more curcots up and down Highway fifty-four. So, within the next, I don't know what they're delaying, I can tell you what they say, but within the next twelve months, we're supposed to be doing that, but that's the state, and we don't have any control over that. So, I would imagine if they say twelve months, then maybe within the next few years, we'll see that. Sometimes you're on top of it, and they're going to do it faster. Uh, they, they do contract that out as well.
Mr. Qua? Are you in Thomas Street?
Oh, yes, um, hey, I know we, we have talked about it, uh, with the record, but, uh, we want to make sure, um, so this, um, plan that we have in here is true, uh, we feel and, uh, we do, uh, 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 so, T Y completely on the city street, a hundred, a hundred percent?
Hundred percent, Mr. Tran.
Yes, well, uh, almost a hundred percent. And if it isn't, we may miss one or two, but for the most part, yes, we're trying to spend for a hundred percent of them. Because we're doing a one coat seal, we're not trying to fix everything, it's not going to fix everything. We're trying to do preventive maintenance, if you will, to that likely wash your car. So, it's one coat wax. Uh, the one coat seal will at least prolong the life of that street. What we were trying to do with everything that we have here, and I think we have every street pretty much covered to do that. Our concerns are like the patch, like behind Olive Garden, how we're going to, how that's going to turn out. So, we may have to actually say, we, we may need a little bit more, because I would love, we can actually patch and seal them. And they're, they're coming.
Okay.
So, yes, sir, everything, our goal is to get everything in the city, you know, we don't have ring road, but those streets that come into the mall area, as well as every residential neighborhood in the city tomorrow will be sealed.
And it, it will be a cover, uh, without spending any money in the, uh, the general fund, it's a cover under the COVID, uh, on, whatever you call it.
The arthons, yes, sir, a hundred percent arthons. And, uh, we still, we still have, uh, two of our L I G grants left that we have, we can hold for three years, so we still have two of those. So, that comes up to, I don't even know if that paid road, but it comes up to close to about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, I think we have to bank on those.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Tran.
I have one further question, just to suggest that the way the agenda written now, it doesn't specify what fund is this to project? The project of the concrete boardwalk or the paving and resealing strip in the street is going to go to? So, if you make a motion to add the specific, the specific, uh, of the fund, the, um, the swap and building the ground for the concrete boardwalk and the opera, um, a grant for.
I think it's really important, the twenty, twenty-one squads will make a part of the motion.
It's on page seventy-three of the packet.
I'm sorry?
It's on page seventy-three of the packet.
But it's not on the motion, so it's not going to be valid. If you put it somewhere, if it's not specified in the motion, it's not, it would go through the general fund.
Okay.
So, we need to add the other thing there.
Ms. Dean.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. They may not be in the fact, but they're, they're definitely on the list there for us. They did a combined one, so we did a neighborhood, there were lots of streets that were included. Some of the visuals may not be included, but the harbor, and actually, when we're doing this in thermoplast, we will be putting down, it's good for paying. A lot of crosswalks aren't in there, um, you can't see, or there are some of those, you can't see the crosswalks, the stop lines in the, in the neighborhood. So, that is included in the price of what they're going to have. So, you'll see the striking, um, you'll see the crosswalks back, you'll see visible stop lines and center lines along the road. So, that is included in that.
So, that the, um, that the, um, street from back of Olive Garden goes from Southway Parkway all the way to, um.
It, it, it cuts, so there's a, the cross street there is.
I'm not sure where the, uh, gas station.
Yeah, right by the, uh.
So, you're saying that there were side streets? I was just paying this way.
Yes, sir.
Um, I was informed that, um, you don't have to do children's way. He said, somebody said that street is perfect.
Oh, children's way is first on the list.
You can put that on my street.
Thank you, sir. Uh, work decisions and resolutions. Uh, resolution twenty-three oh four, uh, to create a fund, then repay the lockbox account, majority fund one, as being we pay the blue, uh, due in twenty twenty-five, I think it solved the issue, what's the problem?
Yeah, and this is a, just a, a request for a resolution, I'm going to put these funds to, moving from currently, though, still, still being the majority fund one, it will just move into a debt repayment account in there and designate it for that balloon note that's due in twenty twenty-five. We've looked at a number of ways, sleepless nights, and figure out how to repay that. Um, there is an early payment penalty. There's no sense in the city engaging in that, which would lead us to say, well, let's just trust the interest rates and hopefully they'll go down in twenty twenty-five. Don't think that's a good bet for us. Um, we've tried to look at arbitrage, we've looked at different financing options that we can do. So, what we've determined is the best way to do this is kind of, we have the funds available in the Georgia one fund, we'd like to segue those funds into a separate account and just put a lockbox on those, and then when it comes due in twenty twenty-five, we'll pay it off.
Questions, Mr. Tran? Ms. Tran.
No questions.
Mr. Qua?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Tran. Things that those account balances, not a bad deal. Um, we might have time for everybody to grab a real quick copy of this amazing copy that's back here. I don't know how long that's going to take, but, uh, grab that and go direct into the city council session and, uh, we're going to.